The decision-making process we're going through. This one, we're gonna go through the history of Fertow Field, the results of the public feedback that we've had at that last meeting. And then the engineers will discuss the site evaluation criteria that was used and or the preliminary site evaluation that they've gone through recently. The minimum property size that's gonna be required for what the facility needs. The top four sites will show the evaluations of all of those. Then we'll go into a board comment and at the end is the public comment. So again, under decision-making process, we need to go through and review our data. We've gotta understand where the population center is so that emergency vehicles can have access, easy access to respond to emergencies. We've saw, we've got input from the department heads. We're gonna continue that process even further because they're the ones who manage the apartment. They need to have, provide their input as to what is the best way that they can perform their functions. The infrastructure limitations that we have. There are some properties that are extremely expensive to get infrastructure to. The, again, the public safety, emergency response safety, those are very critical. The department heads have a substantial part of that. So following this meeting, we will have another work session again. And we will discuss the roads, results of this meeting and the meeting that we had previously. Go over all of our options and alternatives. We will discuss further down, how we're gonna narrow this further down to a specific location. Then we will start dealing further into the project costs. There's some costs that we can't analyze yet because we don't have a site nailed down yet. How the project's gonna be paid for. And out of all that, we'll then develop an educated solution to this whole thing. And even if education solutions did not do it at all, we don't know yet. This is all discovery process in this. So, wanna make this clear because people still going down this road. This was the starting point here, to establish what could be done in a property. And then we went through all the properties that are available at the last meeting. Quite a number of properties. Some of those properties are now no longer available. We got here with, you know, people saying it's wrong to begin the process without township resident input, but we had a lot of opportunity for input and we have had input from people. The petitions being one of them, people coming to the public comments. We appreciate that, all of you coming out here. This is what we want. This is how we want our meetings to be filled all the time. So, I don't like bad information, incorrect information, incorrect rumors that are floating around. So, I have this in here just so that everybody can be clear on the reality of the situation of how Fertow Field came to be. In 1921 and 1922, the township bought up the properties of Fertow Field. Prior to that, it was a sawmill kind of operation going on there and just a few homes on it. For some reason, we can't find the township minutes that dealt with the purchase of these properties on that whole field so that we can find out why the township purchased that field. But these are the deeds on here, of course you can't read them through this projector, but we do have the documents. So these are the four documents that relate to the four properties. This is all of Fertow Field. This was owned by the Nolan family. This was owned by the mayor's family, the Hagler family, and the whole family. No Fertoms owned this field. Then in 1950, the school purchased that property from the township for $1 and it had a reverter clause in it that when the school was done with it for public purposes, it had to come back to the township. And in 2007, that's what happened. The school had their athletic field. The reason why the school used it in the first place was to develop an athletic field. That's where Mr. Fertow came, was key in it. He was a critical component in making that into an athletic field for the school. And they dedicated it to him. So, it came back to the township, township owns it, zero deed restrictions on it. And that's it. That's the history of Fertow Field. So, at the last meeting we had, for those of you who weren't here, we had a map that was up there. People came in, they put dots where they felt that the township hall should be placed. Then, at the end of that meeting, after hearing all the information, we had everybody go back up and put dots on a new map as to where they felt it should be placed. And the results of that were very interesting. So this was map number one. Most of the dots were placed here at the current township hall. There are some here, Fertow Field, we've got a few here. There was, there's some here, we got one there, Radcliffe Park. There's even one all the way at the other end of the township. Oh, and you can see one back here too.
One on the island too.
There's one on Long Island too.
Yeah, on the island, damn it.
Now, after hearing all the information from the last meeting, this is what map two looked like. A lot of dots moved. We've got more in this area here. We've got less at the current here. We have a few more at Fertow Field, but quite a few, Family Fair and Kmart. So out of the results of this, this public input here, we picked the top four locations to analyze next. So now we're gonna go have our engineers discuss their evaluation of this. They were hired because they're an outside agency. They're not concerned with where it's built, but they will do the analysis that we ask of them. So it's an unbiased analysis. And of course, they are the ones who have the education to do these proper analysis. So I will go ahead and pass it on to Row Engineering. Rick Freeman and Jason Goff.
If you can hang by the microphone there.
Good evening. My name is Rick Freeman with Row Professional Services Company. I'm here with Jason Goff from WTA. And as Mr. Weed said, we brought on to look at the various criteria looked at in evaluating each of the top four sites that came out of the last work session. Combination of what the existing site consists of, the size of the site, the potential cost to acquire the site, and then also any site development costs associated with it. Whether the existing site has existing buildings on there that would have to be demoed, site remediation if there was any potential hazardous material, contaminating materials on. And then along with that, also the just a general re- that are re-shaping the site as far as the soils. And that, along with the fact, one thing we did verify, all four sites have access, adequate access and equal access to water, sewer and smart sewers. So utility connections did not play as a factor in the evaluation of these four sites because they all have easy access to that. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to the site evaluation criteria to Jason.
Yeah, so what you see here is a matrix of fourteen specific items that were identified, touched on in the previous presentation and tonight also generally. But size, cost factors, location, fourteen different specific items that we evaluated each property against. And these are also laid out somewhat at priority level because certain criteria are more important than others. Things like location and property size. It's really, you have what you have with the properties, you can't really change that as compared to things like existing soil conditions. You know, there are things we can do with design to address those and so those factors become less critical, a little less than priority. One of the most critical things, the first item listed there is the property size. What sort of property size you have, you can't really change that. So what we wanted to do is first establish what's the minimum property size that would be realistically necessary in order to adequately accommodate the facility. So what we have here is a diagram that we put together, taking into account some of the different factors involved in the facility. Especially if this is not, if it's not a site plan, it's not a proposed plan, it's not the intended plan. All this is a tool that we use in a graphic format to allow us to evaluate and establish how much property really is necessary in order to make this project feasible. So we've got a building size 20,000 square foot as a minimum size to accommodate the combined services center. Some critical elements would be parking requirements for the various needs. We also, critical factor is the access for fire trucks and equipment. This is laid out as such a way to allow a pull-through access. It was much more efficient in the way that the fire car responds and returns to the area. We accommodated area, sufficient area of in front, both the entry and the exit of the building for the fire truck equipment for staging and vaporance access, which is really a necessity as they're pulling in or maneuvering or they're pulling out in an emergency situation and have adequate sightline visibility. And also that space we should use for staging and preparation as well in terms. Also accommodated some green space area as well inside and taking into account kind of a minimal perimeter setback that would be part of a typical sightline solution. So you can see the total there as this lays out. Just over three acres of property would be the minimum amount based on this evaluation what we recommend be necessary to efficiently develop this property. Again, just stress this is not a full plan, it's a graphic tool that helps evaluate. So with that, we'll land it to evaluation of the four top properties. I'll let Rick touch on the additional part here.
Following with the previous slide, the general size of the site. For the, those of you that were at the last meeting and you heard the various department personnel come up and talk about their individual apartments. We, we went through with each department, the police, the fire and all of that to come up with what they felt was the, I'll say, minimum as far as operating successfully and efficiently. So that was what went into that development of that 140,000 square foot site along with the parking and such for senior center and the library and the community center. As was stated coming out of last, last work session, the top four sites, the top site was the Family Fair site. And the area that is being looked at is on the western side of the actual Family Fair Shopping Center and their parking lot of where the dry cleaning, dry cleaner is currently located at. And the site area that is hatched out there is 6.42 acres. So plenty large enough to take into consideration the three-point, little over three acre site that we need. Along with that, the property cost, I believe that $499,000 is what the asking price is currently. We also looked at that as, a lot of you might know, we evaluated also from the state equalized tax value and all of that and also looking at other properties in the area as far as what it might be going for, so. Now, the development costs that we have there, $250,000, that is based on a couple of factors. One, since this has an existing building on it, we would have to look at demolition of that building. And being a dry cleaners, there is the potential of the chemicals that are used in the dry cleaning process to have contaminated the soil in and around the building. So what we looked at is a little higher square foot cost for demolition. Normally, we're looking at $4 to $5 a square foot. We looked at $8 a square foot to demolish the square footage of this building with, again, unknown what we might come, what we might come across inside the building. Additionally, the perimeter around the building to about four foot out, we looked at excavation of that area down to four feet deep as far as removal of the, any substructure or any chemicals that might have leached in the ground. And then the overall site, the 6.42 acres, we looked at reworking the top two feet of the entire site. And that is removing soil, removing material that might be there that is unsuitable for redevelopment. And then along with that, regrading it for drainage and parking and all of that stuff. So that's where the $250,000 estimate came from. And we use that same criteria on all four sites so that it was a equitable comparable evaluation of each site.
So, going then back to the major, those specific criteria that we looked at, we laid that out, made a determination of how we rated the property in each category. Green is areas where there's, if you meet the criteria well, there's no concerns. Red would be major concerns or potential issues related to that particular category. Yellow would be kind of moderate concerns or issues. So you see as we went down with the Family Fair site, there were several items there that we identified as being major concerns. The first one being cost, there's gonna be a, it would be a cost to purchase the site. It's privately owned, it's a retail cost and all of that. The, also the neighborhood, the location, while it's great for, or well, it's good for access with proximity to the streets and roads in the area. There's also the grocery store there, so you have traffic and potential congestion and that would contribute compared to some of the other sites. It's not quite as ideal, it's a way to identify that as a concern. The likewise, the development cost, it's a little more on the higher side compared to some of the other sites in terms of the development cost. So take that as a red. And then also, as Rick touched on, with the dry cleaners there, potential concerns with some contamination that contribute to the cost because there's some concerns there as well. Couple of the items that were tagged with some moderate concerns, the access related to the proximity of the grocery store and the, also some architectural digs and armpit stuff that's been found relatively near that area so there's a possibility it might encounter something there as well. And as I mentioned early on, we prioritize these factors as well. And so part of that is we assign, and try to quantify this evaluation. We've set an integral value of each category, they're in ascending order here. And you see the evaluation score, we just totaled up based on each category with the evaluation score. Try to somewhat quantify how these all compare to one another once I've summed it up.
Site two from last work session, the Kmart site. Obviously, it's located on US 23 for access. The site area is roughly 7.46 acres. So again, plenty large enough for the site development, 3.2 acres. This one has a little obviously higher acquisition property cost with the size of the building. And that, again, looking at the taxable value and the criteria we used and estimated right now to acquire that property is right around $2 million. Development costs, again, the criteria that we used was exactly the same as the Family Fair site. The building itself at $8 a square foot for demolition. Again, this is a dry cleaning site. We, as far as we know, looking at the records, there was never any auto repair or portion of this building. But based on the year that it was originally built and various additions, there's probably more likely than not asbestos in the building and in the building materials and stuff that would have to be addressed as far as the demolition. Since that's the case, did the same thing with about four foot perimeter around that. Looking at a four foot excavation. And then the entire site with the asphalt parking lot, reworking that, removing the asphalt and such. We've got $1.25 million worth of redevelopment, development costs associated with this. As I said before, on 23, you can see they're laying behind it. Utilities are not a problem, they're easily accessible for the redevelopment of this site.
So getting the evaluation of the existing criteria for this property, again, there was a few items that were significant concerns. Again, the cost is being a little expensive. Property from acquisition cost and likewise the development cost. So both of those areas were major concerns relative to this one. Rick touched on also the environmental. While we aren't aware of the potential for soil contamination, environmental hazards because the potential asbestos or different ashes material within the structure itself that would have to be addressed, there's some current concerns there as well. And then also, on a moderate level, the location, it's a little further apart than any other three properties that we evaluated. So it's a little less ideal in terms of that, in terms of the location of the property as well. Let's see the evaluation there.
Third site is the existing township hall site. And this one was a little bit more complex as far as evaluating it because obviously the existing offices are there, the department station is there, the police department is there, ongoing activities. So as we get into the development costs, we've got staging issues that we've got to deal with and all that stuff. Size-wise, 1.35 acres. So with a, the 3.2 acre evaluation, obviously that won't fit within this site. So this one will be more likely or not would be, you have to take into consideration a multi-story structure. Property cost, township does own, owns this property, so therefore there's no property cost. And then kind of those criteria that I just mentioned, the development cost, we usually get the same criteria as far as demolition and the site remediation as far as soil and the overall site to come up with. But then again, like on the demolition side, we would either have to stage township facilities and functions at another site while this site was being demoed and will be built. Or we could look at possibly staging it where we would take down part of the building and leave the other part of the building. But if, I think it was brought up in the last meeting, how the internal utilities and all of that stuff works within this building, it would be very difficult to demolish part of this building and keep the other portion of the building functioning during that timeframe. So that added to the development costs. And then as I said, the multi-level also added to the development costs. This one, smaller site, can be, can be worked. But again, probably higher initial upfront costs again associated with this. Not the primary cost, none at all.
And what I would just add to that in terms of development cost is, you see the $350,000 and asterisk there. The point of the asterisk is that, as Rick said, we need to evaluate if we use the same criteria to look at it for a site development cost. But in terms of the building construction on this site, the other factors that Rick mentioned with either having temporary offices or the township facilities, probably staged or phased project approach. And also potentially multi-story development versus single story. All those factors are gonna contribute to a more expensive building construction on this site than it would be on the other three sites. While it's not directly a site development cost, it is a consideration to keep in mind. The other sites are all meet the minimum, carry or apply with larger. So you do a single story project, the space is available, you do it all in one phase and then move it into the, to the new structure where you wouldn't be able to do that here and those are all gonna add additional cost and building constraints to that. So the evaluation here on this property, there were a few items that were significantly concerned, actually one being the size of the site. Kind of significantly complicated developing that property, at least in terms of having the combined services center and dealing with the existing occupation of the building. Access, that was highlighted as a moderate concern just because of the location, it's a little more congested than some of the other sites. The Family Fair location, Fertow Field, the Kmart. Or a little further out, it's not necessarily quite congested right in that downtown area as the current situation is. And then the development cost, again, the existing structure, demolition cost there a little on the higher side. And then again, with the environmental being a moderate concern here. Similar to the Kmart building, the ancient structure potentially needs some asbestos and hazardous materials within the structure that have to be addressed as well.
The fourth site that was ranked at the last session was is Fertow Field. 3.35 acres. Again, township-owned, as was discussed earlier in this presentation. So there'd be zero property costs associated with it. Development costs, there's no demolition cost. Therefore, there's no potential for building environmental issues or soil or drainage issues around the building site. So that demolition cost will not factor into this. But I still did look at and took into consideration roughly a two-foot reworking of the soil, removal of that and getting the site ready for construction. And that's what $65,000 comes from. Again, utilities are easily accessible. Essentially, you can pick it around the site. And again, the fact that there was no demolition cost here, that's why that number is significantly lower for this site.
So evaluating this site, there were a few areas that were a lot of concern. Maybe where there's residential properties around there, not necessarily ideal for the location of fire and police. And then also some adjacent areas from past gas stations in the area that have potential for some leaching, a bit of potential contamination of soil as well is a minor concern as well. Really none of the, none of the criteria that are major concerns of this site property. So this is just a slide here, the overall summary for property side-by-side. Basic size and combined acquisition and development costs that were asked me for those properties and then the evaluation material.
Thank you. Does the board have any questions for the engineers?
I don't have any questions. I'd like to thank them for putting this matrix together in the short amount of time they did. Appreciate it.
I have questions. Can you explain to me the evaluation scores? I'm not understanding the difference between the Family Fair and Kmart and the cost difference. I get that the dry cleaners is a questionable because you don't know if there's contamination. We've had that site, another site in town that's been remediated. So it's not like it can't be taken care of. So I don't understand the big difference in the score when the cost to do the Kmart one is like a lot more than the one is at Family Fair. And Family Fair only scored a 64 and Kmart scored a 73.
Well, actually, understanding of how we came up with those scores, it's just a reverse order. We assign a point total to each category. So the item at the top, there's 14 categories. We assign 14 points to item number one, 13, the item number two, so on and so forth. The score of the rated category, we give the points for that. The score created in a category, we give the points for that, that particular item. If it was randomly given any points to it, yellow would give partial points and just pull up those scores. It's not an exact science, it's simply trying to come up with some way to quantify the criteria and get a side-by-side comparison between the different properties.
Is this what you use for every site evaluation? Like in other projects, different things?
Yes, it's a norm. As far as the demolition and the site reworking of that, as those are normal criteria, Jason uses the same criteria in other site evaluations, because again, most of these public facilities require this, this process as far as identifying the site for the facility, so this is a, this is an industry-wide used process to go through. And again, the Kmart site, you're looking at a 90,000-square-foot structure, and the dry cleaner site on that is eight or nine thousand square feet, I believe, if I can remember right off from there, so that's where the demolition costs are significantly different, and then obviously the property acquisition cost.
Thank you.
I have a question. With the, with the Kmart location, what I'm gathering is that mostly is, is the concept is to demolish the buildings as opposed to like renovate, is renovation there or retrofitting the building to the needs possible, since it's such a large building with a relatively open space?
It might be possible. We didn't evaluate the existing structure itself.
Okay, sure.
Our evaluation level at this point was to make the assumption of demolition of the existing, any existing structures on the site and development of a new structure.
Okay.
It's certainly always possible to adapt an existing structure to use, obviously this particular type of function with the fire department, the police department, there's some very specific criteria ultimately that would need to be developed within the structure, both the housing equipment, security issues, and so those would certainly present challenges in existing structure. It probably has additional costs and complications trying to adapt existing structure versus building something new from scratch.
Okay. And I can, I can appreciate the process taken because of trying to compare apples to apples, and when you start taking, so I can appreciate that. So, but it's possible, and, and the same, I had same, same kind of question about Township Hall. If we got further down the process, I suppose we could look at each site more specialized and specific, but I wondered if even there, a complete demolition maybe isn't, maybe we could benefit from some retrofitting of?
Yeah, it might be possible. The challenge there is that because the building's currently in use.
Sure.
As mentioned, the phasing and staging to be able to develop that property while still being used in there, you'd have to move everything out in order to do the work or space things, do certain portions of work, so that creates kind of different set of challenges from a design standpoint. Not going to say that it couldn't be done, but it certainly would be complicated.
Okay. Thank you.
I have another question. You talked about access from the different sites, from Family Fair where you could get out on Cedar Lake or US 23, and it was a little bit easier than a couple other places where we're currently at, at Town Hall with the light and so forth. Was MDOT, were, speaking to MDOT, was that ever addressed, or do you guys already know all those things, how the flow of traffic and things like that affects an area if you're going to increase the traffic?
Essentially, those would be part of the, the actual building site development costs and stuff, and really it's, it's a, it's a traffic access evaluation, there's really no cost associated with it. It would be whether or not, it's a little bit of timing, the timing of the events, the traffic on 23 is all part of an evaluation process. I did not see any issues at any of these sites as far as access to 23 that would raise the red flag that would be not prohibited, prohibited in terms of, that would not be allowed by MDOT. Everything is, is access, it's far enough off the, off of 23 to give enough visual except for the existing Township Hall is the only one that's closest to 23. But again, this already has access to 23, so MDOT would not come back and change what the requirements are there, so we could, again, once again, it was one of those things that had all sites being equal, we did not see one that caused us a concern.
I guess my only concern is that I live on Hall Island and trying to get out and turn left at any time during the day anymore is very hard to do with the traffic going southbound, so I'd be concerned about that if we did locate to that, if that was the plan chosen. Also, I have another question. At the previous meeting, there was a lot of comments about not going into one consolidated building, but maybe into do two different consolidated buildings, and since I haven't seen the presentation before, is there a site evaluation for two different buildings or just one?
There's some things that have not been worked on yet because the board needs to narrow this down further. If they were to go ahead and give an evaluation of four to 15 different properties, it would be very time-consuming and very costly, so we're going to get the board to narrow it out to, you know, one or two locations. Then some factoring can be done in there that you can get more precise on what the numbers are, what the effects are overall.
Have we seen the maps?
Here, a couple of caveats here. This property cost estimation was derived from SEV. The property is not for sale, it's purchased by another company that's not Kmart, so we don't know if it's going to come up for sale, and if it does, how much it's actually going to be, what its market price is going to be. Family Fair, that whole block, this, this entire thing, 23 to Cedar Lake, is all, one lot is for sale, and the grocery store building itself is owned by somebody else, not by the landowner, so that comes with a lease attached to it. We've just recently got a copy of the lease, we're going to have that evaluated by legal to find out if that lease is of benefit or is a detriment. We don't know the details of it yet. As far as the town, this property here goes, in talking with the engineers about putting everything consolidated on this property, we pretty much have to eliminate a community center because there's just not enough room for it. And even at that, it still may require building it overpaying, which is very costly to do to still provide round-level parking.
Would not building a library and adding a Township Hall, would that be feasible? Instead of accessing the community, you see what I'm asking? Not, so it's out of this group of consolidated buildings, or buildings that we're looking to consolidate, Mr. Weed just said, this site, we potentially would have to leave off the, a community center. My question was, could we keep a community center and leave off the library? Because it has a existing home. I don't know, space, size-wise, but?
Yeah, there can be configurations. Sorry, specify, that's just kind of an example.
Okay. Maybe not all, not all, not all services could be combined potentially. Which one would be left off could be?
The thing with the community center though is that's the largest amount of vacant space within it.
Yeah. My concern is that at this point, that's the one service that, that we don't have in the community because of the recent sale, so it has a priority to me, but that's, I can appreciate your response.
So, there's, go back to the maps. There's even a Don on Long Island.
Is it still there in the second one? Oh, it's gone.
No, it's gone. We convinced it.
Just thought I'd ask.
It's no mobile access.
Was the one still west of town out there still, in the second one?
No.
Okay.
All right, so at the next meeting, we have to sit down and hash out the direction that the board wants to go in, just got to determine, is the project going to go forward at all? And if it is, then what configuration there's going to be, and then what location to put it at. We have to have some definitive goals so that that way we can provide, or analyze definitive So if you have any other questions or need some other information brought out, please let us know.
I do, if I could raise one right now. In order to make that decision of is the project going to go forward, for me, I'm interested to know, and be interested from the engineer and architect, if it's possible, to get an estimated cost to operate a building with a, with a footprint of 40,000 square feet. So nothing specific, but just in this idea of consolidation, the reason it's appealing to me is to be, to be getting more efficient and, and cost-efficient and effective. And if we can look at the costs that we, that are associated that we've had with operating the four or five buildings historically, and compare those to what we might expect the, the cost to operate a consolidated building, and then if, if it would cost more, you know, my instinct tells me hopefully it would be less, but I want, I would like to, you know, know, and if it's, if it's more, then I don't know that this is a great idea. If it's less, and we get to realize that savings year after year over the useful life of a building, 50 years or whatever, that's helpful for me to know if this idea even goes forward or not, and then we deal with the site and everything, so I'd be interested to know that.
Right. So in the decision, are we going to go forward with it? That's critical to determine whether we're going to narrow it down to something specific. And if we narrow it down to something specific and the information comes back as not good, then we can still make a decision to not go forward.
Sure.
Nothing's locked in stone in that regard.
Sure.
It's just that, it's just that if, we have board members who aren't on solid ground with making it go forward, we need to know that ahead of time because we don't need to spend any more time doing this, and it's just not going to happen.
And, and for, at least from my individual standpoint, getting that data would solidify my ground more, it would, it would, that's the one thing that's fundamental to this, to me, that I'm looking for to really solidify my thinking, so.
Are we going to get another chance for board comment, or is this, this is it right here?
Yeah, this is the last slide, right here, board comments.
Okay, well then, maybe you can reiterate the fact of how long, not only this board, but many boards previous have been looking at spatial needs for the Township, it's not a new concept or anything like that, it's been discussed for as long as I've been around, at least, so since 2002, so.
Yes.
Just so people are aware.
Any other comments?
I've been associated with consolidation and manufacturing, and it definitely pays, putting everything underneath one roof, definitely pays. These, close three plants and moved them into one. Transportation costs just don't have anything to do with that, but that, at that time, over a million dollars a year per plant, we save through transportation costs by putting everything underneath one roof. So it definitely pays.
All right, then we'll go into the public comments, so make sure you identify if you're an Oscoda resident, make sure you introduce yourself, and there is a three-minute time limit, we have the clock over there, I don't want you to see it very well. Kind of get a feel of the clock over there while you're up here speaking. Who do we have first?
I've got Larry Holland, I don't usually do this job, I've got Larry Holland about consolidation.
Larry Holland, yes, I'm an Oscoda resident for too long, I suppose, to get hold. Well, thank you, Mr. Nordine, you raised the same questions I raised last time at the public comments, and I appreciate that, so I've cut down the time significantly, but I'm. Congratulations to the Oscoda Township Board because they've already begun reconfiguring their current Oscoda Township offices, seeing that they're rewiring whole buildings, they are making investments, and those easy investments are all for naught, because we also hired a $150,000 economic development coordinator, and the economic development coordinator certainly has a little business, and the idea of where this project is going to go as well, and I would certainly like to hear his thoughts on where this is going to be built or split or, or changed. One of the things that I've seen over the years here is that we always do just enough, we don't do more than enough, we don't do enough to think about the future, and we're starting to think about the future with things like, what happens if 1,200 families move into this community, and we decide to sell Bertoffield as a place, which is only, what, .4 acres above the minimum required space, where the other spaces happen to be double the amount of space? When you search it back there in economic development, some of those places that have double the amount of space also could have some additional facilities put into play that basically makes it so that we can have additional commerce happen in those areas. We're also self-imposing congestion upon ourselves, okay? When we pack everybody under one location, we need to think about the people in Hall Island, it's a common sense thing. We need to start understanding where that traffic is going to go, where it's heading to, and how long it's going to take to get from point A to point B. It's definitely common sense. With regard to the Kmart Plaza, tearing up the entire asphalt is part of the demolition cost is simply impractical. Unless there's a need for the entire parking lot to be tore up, don't do it, just don't do it. Family Fair, hey, that's an income generating structure right now, economic development. We got a building sitting there, if there's a lease there, we may happen to make some money off of it, great. That current location though, may be the best chance for part of the Township, and consolidation is necessary, but how much consolidation is necessary? Mr. Nordine, your question is very valid, we need to know that. What is the recovery of costs associated with selling the current properties? We need to know that, the speculative costs, we need to know that, so we know how much we can spend. Again, splitting the buildings is going to be necessary, or consolidating the buildings is going to be necessary, but I'm going to tell you the answer to your question, Mr. Nordine, is that you guys make the decision 100% on if you're going to consolidate one, two, five buildings. That choice is going to be yours.
Thank you.
Who do we have next?
Deanna Ruckman.
I'll have her, I'm not, it's very snow, so let somebody have it.
Then Dawn Barber regarding Bertoffield.
My name is John Barber, and I'm a resident in Oscoda, and the first thing I want to say is I wondered why this meeting was in yesterday's paper and not last week's or the week before. My other question too is, is that consolidating all these things, everybody loves the library where it's at, the senior centers like where the senior center's at, on top of the fact that they have wonderful parking for themselves now, it won't be that way when you do that. The community center should not be in, I've talked to a lot of parents whose kids want to come and talk to the board members, so maybe we should make a plan about that, but I don't think that the community center should be in with the police department and the fire department. We have a wonderful police department and fire department, but they don't need to be in with that, kids have enough to deal with. Bertoffield, knew that was going to be the least of them all, money-wise, but what you're doing is hurting the community. We need Bertoffield, we need it because it's a part of our history, and for you to build on it and take away that would hurt this community for years to come. It needs to stay, it needs to become the part that it was supposed to be on the billboard that I kept seeing in the Township for what, almost a whole year, of how this part was going to look when they were done with it, which cost $10,000 or more, and then boom, it was gone. I just see- I just feel that, and the community, I'm, when I started this with the petition and everything, my whole idea was to see how far it would go with the community. I didn't know it was going to go this far. It's been overwhelming to see that the community is coming together because we all have a feeling for that park, for that field. And I had a, talked to a gentleman the other day, which I talk to people all the time, 77 years old, he played baseball on that field and had his first kiss on that field. So, that was kind of cool to hear that. But we need to keep Fertile Field. And as far as you building on the town hall where it's at, they have schools that they put classrooms in trailers. I don't know why you can't put trailers on the parking lot and have the, well, they do it for schools. I don't know why they can't do it for wider building there where they can put trailers on the, the lot and you can have your trailer, you know? I mean, I've seen schools that way, so. But either way, Fertile Field needs to be left alone. And to consolidate everything doesn't make any sense. Just build on town hall where you're at. You can go up a couple of levels, you'll get the police department, the fire department, all the space that they need. And you're still on where you're at in the middle of town, the Wahoo district, and it'll all work out for the best. But Fertile Field is the community's, and it should stay that way. And it's been that way for 100 years. Doesn't matter where it came from.
Thank you. I have John Minor regarding Fertile Field.
I take no responsibility. Hello. I've been a part of this community for almost over 50 years. Graduated from here and have seen, had the chance to travel around most of the United States. And I believe that Fertile Field needs to stay a community event center, parks, if you will. And, and the consolidation for the, for the departments, I totally agree with that. Do you need a new facility? Yes. But it's, it's, Fertile Field is not the place. The other thing that I don't think we need to have, the parks, the community center, the library, all in that same facility. Public safety facility would be what I would recommend for, for everyone to, to try and make that happen. Because that's a, in a, in a lot of other communities I've seen, and these are big cities that I'm talking about. I'm not talking about, you know, Harrisville and Lincoln. The, that it's very, we very much need that. The consolidation of those departments and to make it efficient for everybody to take adoption. That's all I've got.
Thank you. I've Jeff Hanson regarding new township facility.
Hi, I'm from Oscoda, live on Cedar Lake Road. So, what Jamie said, traffic, trying to turn left out of Hall Island? Yeah, trying to turn left off Cedar Lake Road on 23. Especially in the summer, there are a lot of traffic issues there. And you guys did a good job. Looks good, but it doesn't seem like you took everything into consideration. One thing that I thought is very important, and probably hits on John's point, is expansion in the future. We modernize our facilities, we build a brand new facility, 10 years down the road, they're going to need larger facilities. The Family Fair, you do everything. You've got a lot of room there for future expansion, future modernization of the police and fire department. I think that's the one you guys should go for. It's obviously in here. People don't watch it on Fertile Field, that building. So, Family Fair would be the best spot. Both of that's one you'll choose. Thank you.
Thank you. I have Ann Rique, correct? Is that correct? All right. Regarding, is it, if this is a board decision or a public decision?
When this is all said and done...
Oh, step the podium, please.
When this is all said and done, I just have one question. Is this entirely a board decision or is this going to be put to the public?
We got, we're not answering questions in this meeting for that. It's going to be board's.
I believe this is the last one unless anyone else has one they want to turn in. Justin Griffiths regarding Fertile Field.
All right, my name is Justin Griffiths. I'm a lifelong resident of Oscoda. My family delivered milk as dairy farmers in the 1800s before US 23 was ever even really a road. So, you know, I've heard, I heard a lady say, it's a field, you know? And she probably didn't even know it was a baseball field. And I played baseball there, and I feel it's important to keep that. One of the things that I'd like to consider in picking a township hall is it's forever. It's not for 20 years. But building really close to Lake Huron seems ridiculous to me. And you've got the waves crashing in, they're power washing the windows of most of our cabins, and there's sandbars all the way across US 23. I wouldn't want my township hall to be that close. Plus, we have a five mile radius of fire safety, like, people. As it sits now, we got four miles of protection out into Lake Huron. That doesn't make any sense to me. I would put my township hall, or at least my rescue, you know, a little farther inland where they have a bigger actual area of being able to service. And we have the river going through there. And I think footside would be a relatively good spot to have a lot of our emergency personnel. Township hall, they'd have a rapid response to more of our township instead of just the US 23 corridor. They could go rear road, they could go middle street, river road, through Assaw. And one of the things that I thought about is, we service Assaw? Do we service Assaw Township? Well, that would be one thing to determine, you know? Are we going to keep servicing them? You know? We talk a lot about being on the right side of the tracks with our emergency when all our kids are on the other side of the tracks, which doesn't make sense. All of Oscoda Township goes to school in Assaw. So, and it wouldn't take much for a small group of kids to block all the bridges and create a super nightmare. So, that's my opinion.
Thank you.
We've got two more, right?
Yep. I've got Regina Davis, I believe, regarding Fertile Field.
Hi, my name is Regina Davis. I'm at 165 in Iowscope County. I have the, you might be familiar with it, the Red Cabin is a red store. It's real close to Five Channel Stand. This was our first season that we had opened up since we had bought it. We had a lot, a lot of people from out of state and from southern Michigan that was coming up here to go to Paul Bunyan thing, go to Fertile Field. I am not in support of the county taking a township and doing what they want with it because then it's going to affect me and other mom and pops' businesses that are out there on 65. Um, I think we need to think about this a little bit harder. You've got four places that you have presented to us. Two of them are not for sale. I don't understand why it was even brought up. One was Fertile, and one is where you already are at. If I could, I would build a lot more to the campground that I have. I can't. Isn't that the way it works with you guys also? Wouldn't that be our money going into that to get what you guys want? Can't you find another way to work this out instead of taking it away? If you do do this, you go ahead, because it is you guys' decision. I do ask and beseech you, if you're taking this away from the people, the families, the rest of Michigan, and out of state people that are coming here, putting their money into this place, this county, this township, small mom and pops' places, can you give back to us two things? Is that asking too much? Can we come together as a community and find those two things where there's a balance somewhere? Let's think about this before you make a judgment and before you come and go ahead and do this. Because we all know we're not stupid. Our taxes are going to go up. There is not a lot of people here. There is not a lot of industry. Why do you want to burden the people here in your township with that? And possibly burden and close the awards mom and pop places? Please take that in consideration.
Thank you. I have Mary Mertz regarding consolidation.
Hello, my name is Mary Mertz, and I'm a lifelong resident of Oscoda. And I just like my opinion to be heard. I happen to like the foot traffic and using the hall downtown where it's at. But I think that they've outgrown that facility. And I think the people that take up the most room in that facility is the fire department. So, I say we give them the boot and find them another place to go. And then we'll have lots of room for either a community center or a library or whatever else is needed, or for future expansion. But pulling the fire trucks in and out of there, they've already said that's a problem with the congestion. And so, let's find them a new home and rebuild the township hall in a manner that will accommodate everything else. Thanks.
Thank you. I think, I think that's it.
All right, board, anything else?
No.
All right, then we're adjourned. Thank you for coming out.